The Tuesday, May 28th, 2024, meeting of the Ellisville Town Council.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we come before you just one more time to thank you so much for the many blessings you've given this little town. Thank you so much for our employees. Thank you so much for the citizens that we serve. We ask you to be with us tonight as we make the decisions that affect all those people. We ask you to say in the Jesus's name, amen.
Whenever you're ready, Noel, roll call, please.
Pamela Samples, here. Scott Oldham.
Here.
William Ellis.
Here.
Trevor Sager.
Here.
Dan Swafford.
Here.
Approval of minutes for the regular meeting on May 13th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
All abstain.
Opposed? Abstain?
You've got your three. You've got your three.
We're getting there, guys. Just give me a minute. Action pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining.
Just don't feel like voting at all.
There we are. Award bid for construction of the DPW building.
Can we move this to further down on items that we talked about?
Oh. If that's the council's pleasure, I'm fine with that, right?
It's fine.
I have no objections.
Okay.
The reason being, we're waiting for the document to give the money.
So we will move now to Resolution 20-2024, Transfer of Funds for the Police Department.
This became necessary with some of our upgrades on the computer service. Our annual refund on our vest was able to take care of our vest that we purchased this year. So we had some money to transfer to computers that we can, again, that can update our computers and also to make our area ready for our new assignment, our new man coming in tonight. Or this next month, I'm sorry.
Questions, comments from council?
Didn't we do one just a meeting or two ago also, transfer to police?
We did, but that was for the High Tech Crime Unit.
Okay.
That was an additional appropriation to cover money for...
That was for his salary.
Yeah.
And so this is just a simple transfer of funds?
Right.
Okay.
They were able to receive some grant money to cover it, so they didn't need that much in there.
His money is already budgeted. We're just moving it around.
Okay, I see what you mean. I thought you're needing new body armor and software, but you're taking it from the body armor to the computer software.
Yes.
Gotcha. All right, that makes sense.
Other questions or comments from council? Is there anything from the public? And back to council for action.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 20-2024, Transfer of Funds for the Police Department.
I'll second.
Motion is second. When you're ready, Noel.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
There are no ordinances on first reading, nor is there an ordinance on second reading. There is new business, which this is a fun time of year for Police Officer of the Year.
Thank you, Mr. President. You have to ensure my voice is still not working quite well.
Before I get to the Police Officer of the Year, I want to inform you or advise you that we had a wonderful memorial service yesterday. We had probably 60 people there, 65 people there. Bill was there. And I want to introduce to you our main speaker yesterday, Admiral Adam Robinson. Admiral, would you come up, please? He flew in from Hawaii to do this, and I want to give him a chance to talk to us for just a second. Adam?
Thank you very much. I thought that you were going to pay me for the trip here, but I didn't see that resolution coming forward. All right, so enough jokes, and I'm sorry. Adam Robinson is my name. George Robinson is my brother. Jimmy Durnall is a good friend, and I wanted to come several years ago, but I finally made it this year. Went to school at Indiana University, Nomonroe County in Bloomington, well. Don't know Ellisville that well, but Ellisville is part of Nomonroe County, so I've been here for many years. Went to medical school at Indiana University. And then I spent 36 years on active duty in the Navy. And I retired in 2011 as the Surgeon General of the Navy. So with that in mind, I'm now with the VA in Honolulu. I'm the director, executive director of the VA Hospital there. And I've also been the executive director of the VA Hospital in Baltimore and also in Washington, DC. So with that in mind, I want to thank everyone for having me come in. It was a wonderful meeting yesterday with many citizens of Ellisville. And it's also a homecoming for me and my sister-in-law, my brother. It's wonderful to be with them. So thank you very much for everything.
I do have a question for you, Admiral. I do have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Are you thinking of staying here? Because I know the weather and everything in Hawaii is so tough. You may not want to go back.
Well, I want to tell you, first of all, there's nothing better, there's no better weather anywhere in the world than in Midwest and in Indiana in the spring and the early summer. So this is beautiful weather. I will say that although the humidity was high for us when I left, it's usually low humidity and the trade winds are back, my wife tells me, so I'm going back there.
Great speech yesterday.
But in any event, thank you very much. I appreciate it. It's wonderful being with you, and thank you very much.
Thank you again, Admiral.
You know, I was so excited about Adam coming. We tried him for the last couple of years, and we didn't get it done. But this year, but I'm wondering now, how am I going to top this for next year? Not many services, not many memorial services had the three-star vice admiral. But I want to get back to the thing here. Ellisville Police Department Chief Deputy George F. Robinson. George, would you come up? So ordered this 28th day of May, 2024, by Ellisville Town Council President Scott Oldham, by Town Manager Mike Farmer and Police Chief Jimmy Durnall. This award is being presented to you not only for your outstanding work with the Ellisville Police Department for the calendar year of 2022, 2023, but also over 50 years of law enforcement. Since 1975, you have excelled as an officer, sergeant, lieutenant, and now deputy chief. Your contribution to law enforcement has been great, and you have become an integral part of the town of Ellisville and Ellisville Police Department. Your accomplishments have been well documented and are too numerous to list in this communication. You could be honored by your career and your time with Ellisville Police Department. Your professionalism and enthusiasm is second to none. Awarded this 28th day of May, 2024, Police Officer of the Year, 2024, George F. Robinson. Adam, do you want to present this to him?
Well, I should, but I will. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hang on, let's get a couple of good pictures here. Turn that around.
There we go. Okay, good.
George, say a little something.
As most of you know, I'm a man of very few words, but I would like to acknowledge the council and all of our supervisors that are here, Mike in particular, who I think does a fantastic job. And I'd also like to thank my brother for appearing this year. It's a little tough traveling from Hawaii these days. Trip is very, very long. But I think that we all appreciated his words at the memorial yesterday. And to Chief Durnall, thank you so much for having me here and for all that you've done for me since I've been here. I cannot count the number of times that you've come in and enlightened me about a lot of different things. So I'm going to continue to be a man of few words. Thank you all a lot. Appreciate it. And to my wife as well. I'd like to thank her for accompanying me tonight. That's special.
George, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Has your brother tried to talk to you?
You into going back with him?
No.
He has to talk to me first, remember?
There you go.
It hasn't happened, but it's a funny story. You was in a change of command ceremony at Bethesda. He was head of Bethesda Naval Hospital. That was his command for some time. So when I showed up, we looked so much alike. I was ordering the different shipmates around. Of course, they didn't know it wasn't Adam, but... But... They did wonder why I didn't have my uniform on. You have to know that. But anyway. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Just one more thing. Of course, Scott and I recruited George out of his second retirement, and he advises me many times. He said, Jimmy, I was doing just fine in my rocking chair watching Netflix. Thank you, George. You've been a great, great help to me for these two and a half years. I appreciate it.
Well, while we're on that topic, I want to extend my congratulations to one person that's been alluded to, but was key to this whole thing, and that's Kathy. He was retired. You had him at home, and you let us drag him back.
I tell him every day now, you know, I really would keep him at home.
Did he tell you when you retire, you're going to go to Hawaii? Was that a promise? If not, you could always say it was.
You know, I'll take him as I can.
There you go.
Well, thank you for letting him come back. We will move on now to old business, discussion of the formation of Redevelopment Commission.
I guess I can start. So I guess the first thing the town needs to do if we want to talk about TIFs in the future for any of our areas of town would be to have a redevelopment commission.
Established by ordinance.
Established by ordinance. So there's a lot of work to be done, maybe to talk to some of our associates with Baker Tilly. And before we move through that process, we need to know what the board wants to do so we don't use up money and time.
There were a couple of questions asked by town council members either during the last meeting or after the last meeting that I have the answers to. So one of the questions was whether or not the Redevelopment Commission could issue bonds without council approval, and the answer is no. They cannot issue a bond in any amount without town's council approval. The Redevelopment Commission cannot enter into a lease agreement without town council approval, and it cannot purchase real estate over $5 million or enter into a contract for purchase of real estate that takes longer than three years without council approval.
So I guess what I'm hearing in practice is if they have no funds set aside or in escrow from another deal, as it were, and would have to go out for a bond, they can't do that without
Correct.
council approval.
Correct.
What they could do is have infrastructure put in that the town would be on the hook for fully once the TIF expires.
Yes.
Such as?
Parks, trails, things like that.
How could they do that without?
Water fountains.
How could they do that without funding?
Well, they could take the TIF money that they get from the AV growth.
Can they spend that without council approval?
Well, I think what William's talking about is the bonds expire, that bonds have to be paid off within 20 years. The TIF, there's a time limit on the TIF.
Right.
So, I mean, once that expires, yes, the town would be, if there's infrastructure like parks or sewers or whatever, yes, I think the town would be responsible for maintaining that.
But wait, Martin, you're saying they'd be, they won on the hook for it if they committed to building a park or a trail or a fire station? Is that what you're concerned?
No, what I'm saying is, okay, let's, I'm just using an example here. They build a water fountain that's made out of limestone that costs $3 million. It's under their $5 million limit. They use TIF funds from their bonds to do that. Well, it maybe costs $150,000, $200,000 a year to maintain. Well, they can do that for the 20 years from the TIF funds coming in, but once that TIF expires, the town has to absorb it. We have no control over what they do with it.
Well, I know, but the assumption is, I mean, if they did something like that, I'm sure wouldn't want to be around when they told how much the fountain costs, but...
But it's already done.
But, well, true, but in 20 years, whatever the TIF, whatever the TIF produces is supposed to be for economic development.
Correct.
And it enhances our infrastructure, you know, it adds to our inventory. So you're looking at, I mean, I don't know how else to say it, but you're looking at what negative could happen, right?
Well, yeah, I know the positives that can happen, but, you know, what it comes down to is when building stuff like that and approving it, the people have elected the town council, not an RDC. Now granted, we can appoint them or we can be the RDC, but they have no recourse. They can't sit there and say, next election, I'm getting those guys out like they can for us.
And I understand that, but isn't, I mean, we've talked about this, but isn't the fix is to have the town council be the RDC?
I agree. That's what I'm saying.
I mean...
I'm assuming that they're not, that it's an independent board.
Okay, so let me take it back a minute before I lose the space in the conversation here and miss my opportunity. So what you're worried about is them contracting for something that, once the expiration of the TIF occurs, we would be on the hook for it.
Correct.
So my question up front, I guess, would be you're envisioning them having access to the TIF funds to pay for whatever it is.
But they do, correct, Darla?
Well, let's just assume for a second, they are not polluting that thought stream for just a second. You, they would still have to have a bond to pay for that $10 or $2 million fountain up front, which would have to come to us for approval before they could enter into that agreement.
Unless they had that money already set aside from the TIF. If the TIF grew enough, they could have cash to do it. I doubt they would.
Right.
But there's unintended consequences that I've seen in other counties that there, it's a mess because they've done a lot of frivolous stuff that the councils would not have done on their own. And then all of a sudden, it's like, tag, you're it.
Okay, so I see the concern.
Right. And they haven't thought through, can what we're doing be economically sustainable for the revenue this area is generating when it is no longer just that area?
Okay. I have a question, but let me get this first. Darla, is there a way to lock that down to prevent that?
Well, I don't, I don't know how, I'm not saying no, but right now I can't think of a way to lock that down. The TIF expires 20 years after it's adopted, after the adoption of the declaratory resolution. So as Baker Tilly pointed out, if you've got bonds, the bonds need to, you need to think ahead and make sure your bonds are paid off. So yes, the whole purpose of this is to build infrastructure. So if you've developed parks, trails, sewer lines, whatever, unless there's another source of income out there, yes, the town is going to have to maintain that. But I think the point of the TIF is to get the funding to build the infrastructure in the first place. So I don't have an answer to your question about how you would set aside funds in the future, but that's probably a question for Baker Tilly.
I guess the question, I kind of went about it wrong. I apologize.
That's okay.
Is there a way that the council can insert in the formation of the RDC having to have approval over a certain dollar limit or a certain time limit over and above the current state law? Can we be more stringent than the state law, or are we limited to that?
I would have to look at that. The ordinance establishing a redevelopment commission is actually pretty simple. And so where you might want to insert the limits is later in your plans. But just the establishment of an RDC takes a paragraph or two or three.
No, understood.
It's not much.
But to address William's concerns, you know, and I have some concerns with it necessarily being the council and not necessarily leveraging some of the expertise and, you know, some of the other things that we could get from having someone besides council do it, or maybe a hybrid version thereof. So just to address William's concerns, I'd like to know, is there a way we can further restrict the RDC encumbering funds into the future or being able to access funds into the future?
And I don't know. That would be a question for Baker Tilly, so I can try to find out.
Please.
And then...
Does that address your concern?
You also stated that a bond cannot be issued over $5 million, so does that mean they could get a bond for $4 million?
A bond can't be issued in any amount. The $5 million limit was on purchase of real estate. So...
So they could still purchase real estate up to $5 million?
Yes.
Without council approval?
Yes.
Okay.
And when the TIF expires, what happens to the real estate the RDC purchased? Does that now become part of the town's inventory or is it...
If the town actually purchased it, yes. If that's...
But if the RDC purchased it?
That they're an extension of the town.
Right.
But if they did it under the $5 million, it may not be something the town wants.
Again, that's my question, is can we, can we, in certain language, limiting them to more or less an advisory standpoint?
Right. I don't mind an advisory. I mean, honestly, that...
Or letting them do that with us serving as the final check.
Exactly.
I agree.
Because we get a lot of ideas, oh, we want a dog park, want a splash pad. All those are great. And the TIF may give money for all that, but then there's ongoing costs with those that our town were not, one of the things I had heard suggested is that we could get motorized carts for people for that area, so they could drive all around there. And that's great, but then us maintaining those, it's like, are you kidding?
And I guess my point is, over the years, I've watched the council change and makeup every four years. So by potentially having that RDC set outside the council or a hybrid version of the council, we maintain some continuity over that 20 years, and we're not, oh, we're three years in and we're going to change because this council doesn't cycle in a four-year.
I do see that point completely, too.
And at any one given time, the majority is up for reelection and can change drastically what is being happening unless that has been left to the RDC to bring forth recommendations to then have the council approve or disapprove. So the RDC would serve as a, for want of a better word, a tenured body with a mission that is developed with the town manager, the town employees, the town council, with the council then serving as a failsafe switch to keep that same body from going rogue. Although, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, Darla, RDC members serve at the pleasure of the board, do they not?
Yes, they can be dismissed.
So if we do see some type of runaway activity beginning, then by a simple motion of the board and a majority of the board, that member or members can be either removed or the complete RDC dissolved. So again, dual checkmarks.
I think where the town council gets its control is after the redevelopment commission is established. After talking to Baker Tilly and getting a global perspective on what you want to do, you're going to adopt a declaratory resolution, which includes the plans for the proposed redevelopment or the economic development plan. You also develop a factual report that supports your findings. That goes, that's approved by the redevelopment commission. It goes to the plan commission. It also goes back to council, and the different boards can have their say and can tinker with it a bit. Then it comes back to the redevelopment commission, which holds a public hearing. Then it approves the plan with a confirmatory resolution. So I think if you wanted to limit the scope of what could be done, I think that's one way to do it, is it goes in your plan that you develop right out of the box.
And if I remember reading it right, the board serves at your will and can be removed at any time.
No, I do get that. The problem is there's some decisions, and I've dealt with this, that once they're made, they can't be unmade. So you can get upset all you want and remove that person, but you've been stuck with the situation.
No, you're absolutely right. That's why I think the failsafe on top of it
Right, I agree.
gives us that ability. What I am concerned about is, I'll just be honest with you. Like I said, every four years, but it's every three-year cycle, the majority of this board can change. And seeing, and this is not a negative, this is just a simple fact. There's only about 500 people in a town of 7,000 to 10,000 who bother to vote for council. So you get 251 of those people decide, I want to go a different direction. Well, the other 9,500 can want to go the same direction the RDC is, and they change the makeup of the board, and, well, we're not going to do that. And we lost any traction that envisioned Ellisville has put forward, this board has put forward, the town has put forward, to what would be a minority of the people who vote because we, I guess, didn't set it up appropriately. Here, we have multiple counterweights and counterbalances and checkmarks. And like you and I talked, the hybrid version may work, much like the plan commission, so you have some continued directive. I just don't want to see it get to the point where every three or four years, we decide we're going to go a different way. And that just, because all that does is waste millions of dollars over the life of the TIF.
Don't want that, but honestly, if they're not voting, I mean, their opinions are important, but if they can't, their opinions aren't important enough or their vision's not important enough to get out and vote, then they really don't care that much.
Well, I got to disagree a little bit because some people want to remain uninformed because they think everything's going well, so why should they bother until all of a sudden a decision's made? And, you know, someone once said that all politics, particularly local politics, is very personal. Because, let's be honest, what the president does today, while we're all interested in that, it doesn't immediately concern us.
That's correct.
What this body does, or three of the five of this body does, immediately concerns somebody who lives in this town. And that's what I'm trying to put a checkmark against, is in the years in the future, this town going from right to left to center to right to left to center. And not politically, but just meandering its way through it and wasting all these TIF dollars and wasting any forward momentum we've gotten because a regressive member, aggressive majority of the council has come aboard, decided, we're not going to do that.
Right.
And then that stifles the growth for the other 9,500, 10,000, 12,000, however many thousand people come along, where this board now, as we're setting it up, has the opportunity to look, and this is difficult, not just beyond next Tuesday, we have to look two years in the future, five years in the future. And now it gets crystal ball out, and we're going to go 20 years in the future.
I'm looking 20 years plus after.
20 to 40 years in the future, you're right. And that's why I just don't want to put the eggs in the basket for a group that can change so dramatically in that three- to four-year cycle, and again, waste that money. If this was a much bigger entity where you captured millions of dollars every year in the TIF, I'd say, okay, we're not going to capture millions of dollars every year in the TIF, or if we do, they're all going to have an earmark for them to begin with. So what I don't want to do is give that meandering prospect of $10 here, $15 there, $1,000 there. All of a sudden, you're into real money.
We need to have a plan. When we get this money, what we're going to do with it.
Right, and we need to have a plan as to how we're setting this board up with those stopgaps and failsafes into the future to keep, well, you and I and the other members of council are all envisioning in our heads the worst-case scenarios from occurring. And if we look at what is the worst-case scenario, well, you envision one thing, I envision another, but can we arrive at a certain point where we're fail-saving both of them? Does that make sense?
So at the last town council meeting, I had suggested a resource. There's a handbook for Indiana Development Commission members and their attorneys, which is written in mostly non-legalese. And I said that the last one was done in 2017. There's actually a November 2023 update that you can find online that I suggest that maybe you look through because that may answer some of your questions. But I guess, what are the council's instructions to me? If it's helpful, we could set up a meeting with Baker Tilly with one or two council members and Mike Farmer and maybe some of the supervisors to talk about where you do want to go with this and what you foresee doing with the TIF money when you get it. So that you don't have a bunch of projects or people coming up with ideas for projects that aren't part of the plan.
You wouldn't probably make contact with Baker Tilly until next week, right?
I could talk to them tomorrow.
Well, what I was going to say is...
Oh, you mean, set up a meeting?
Yeah, what I was going to say is maybe we give council the opportunity for a few days, based on this discussion, we come up with questions for her to ask Baker Tilly to see if that meeting is really needed. And then you ask the questions, and if you all decide, yeah, you need to see us, then by all means, let's send a couple of council members to that meeting and go forth from there. I know William's really done a lot of homework into this. It's just, I don't want to say, hey, William, you're going, you know?
Yeah. It might be helpful, too, if William could email me without mentioning here at a public meeting places where he thinks that the TIF districts have gone wrong or ended up not where the intent was. I think the problem sometimes comes when people are getting the tax abatements for big projects. Because we talk about that at municipal lawyer seminars. There've been some communities that have given tax abatements on the theory that certain things were going to happen, and they didn't happen. So...
If I may, I'd like to point out that the original thought behind forming a TIF district was for some true basic needs of a town, like road infrastructure, stormwater, sewer infrastructure, and a new town fire station. So some of the things, no...
Yeah, those are the things I'm talking about.
Okay, okay, but we should mention that that was what, that's where this all originated.
I'm talking about frilled stuff.
Yeah, I get that, and I'm not...
And we've seen it across the state.
Right.
You can't have frill stuff until you have the basics, and we don't have the... You can't have frill stuff until you have the basics, and we don't have the basics. And that's where this originated was that we we had our first budget meeting today. And as I always say, there's six cows eating out of a five cow feeder. And so we we have limited means, so this was a tool to consider. I have no prejudice whether we do a TIF or not. And but it was for basic needs as our town grows, and it can be used as an economic development tool. And so, you know, that that was my consideration.
I mean, again, I think William's exactly correct that we need to take steps ahead of time and think this out in the long term. Because anything we, for want of a better term, screw up now, is really going to handicap future towns.
No, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the fact that you get to make the decision.
Well, I mean, as we've seen, there's little, you know, Dan, I don't remember what it is, maybe you can help me out. There was something small done in the early 2000s that came back to bite us really bad about 10 years ago. And it could all been, you know, avoided for the most part had somebody had the foresight to go timeout. Let's think beyond the end of my term. Let's think beyond the end of your term. Let's think what we're going to do then. So maybe if we can, again, if council's amenable to this, if you have questions, send them to Darla and let her talk to Baker Tilly, and then we'll see if we need to go forward from there before we do something and make a mistake. I would say personally, yes, I think a redevelopment commission is needed, and we need to move forward with the TIF. Now, what the makeup of that is and what the restrictions we put on them, I don't know yet because I don't know what we can legally do. But if you're asking for a sense of the council from at least me, yes, I think we need an RDC and I think we need to move forward.
My thought is yes also, but again, with the composition, how do we, how do we do this?
I'm good with all the buts.
What's everybody else's?
Do members of the RDC, do they have to be residents of the town of Ellisville?
Yes.
Yeah, I think for me speaking, I'm right there with you, William and Scott. I think it's needed. I am very interested on what Darla finds out as far as the restrictions go. The the hybrid thing that Scott brought up to me is very appealing. Because I think, why not have a fresh set of eyes on it, somebody other than us? If we can mesh some sort of seeding there, I think I'm definitely for it. Move forward.
So if we don't, wouldn't do the TIF, we would need this, right? We're doing this, but if we get the TIF, we have to have this.
Yes.
Yeah, it's the, it's the first step.
Didn't do the TIF, we wouldn't have to have this, right?
No.
But there's advantages beyond the TIF to have a RDC potentially.
Well, I kind of listening to both of you a little bit, and I agree with both of you. I see William's caution because this is something new for the town of Ellisville, and we don't want to get it, as what Scott said, started off in the wrong foot. My question would be, if this council did serve as the RDC for the first year or two, could later then we move it to where we could start bringing in other people?
Well, the board members can be removed at any time.
No, I'm talking about if the council served first.
Well, they have to be the, I mean, you would be voting on yourself.
An example, I could say, well, I want, I'm I'm done serving on the RDC. I'm still going to be on the council. And then you guys would appoint someone else.
I was thinking in a positive light.
Depends on how we structure that.
That's true.
And, you know, Trevor made a good point, a fresh set of eyes, looking at the, looking at the different things. I mean, that's what the planning commission is all about. So I I'm for that, but I'm also leery in the beginning, we got to get the right people in there. So it's one of those things I don't think we need to jump in and next week approve this. And and then, like Scott says, another feller 10 years from now that we've just screwed this up again and so.
So I guess I'll say something, kind of to one of your points that is double edged, and I'm going to admit that upfront.
I'm used to it.
No, 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 not not at you. It's just double edged, depending where you look at it. You know, you brought up the point of could we then relinquish control later? When have you ever seen a body of people being given power and decide, you know what, timeout, we don't want the power anymore? You just don't, particularly as you cycle through different council members as they come up.
I know one guy thinking like that.
So, well, besides you, yes. So again, that's why I thought the hybrid model where we had several council members on it, directing forward and moving forward, and even establishing the RDC member, the RDC president having to be a city or town council person would be necessarily the way to move forward with it, just sort of like the planning commission does. Because that model works fairly well to maintain some control, but also give them their own independence to act separately from the council. Because the problem there is, so we appoint a five-member RDC and it's the five members of the board. There is no way you're going to vote somebody off the RDC. It's not going to happen. It's simply not because you will have structured your your ordinance to say the council is the RDC. And then again, that whole three member thing, as soon as you get three, well, it goes in a different direction. Well, next month it goes in another direction. Next time we get elected, we can go in a totally separate direction. Here it's the check and balance over time. And, you know, what you've brought up so many times over the years, and you're so correct, that gives us that moment of pause, even after a major vote. Yeah, we're going to acquire that piece of property. Now there's a moment of pause for the five of us or whoever's in our seat, the time to go, no, for these reasons. Go back and redo it or restructure it or look someplace else for it. So it's that multiple set of eyes that I'm kind of looking at, sort of like the plan commission when people appeal things. They can ultimately appeal it to us. So they have two bites at the apple. Well, here we're taking two bites of the apple to stop a catastrophic mistake.
And and I see that point, but on the other side of that, too, as you mentioned that the council changes, then so could the redevelopment commission. As new board members come on, they say, I don't like those guys, so I mean.
You're exactly correct. It would just be more difficult to make that happen necessarily.
But if three people got elected in the council, flipped the direction, it wouldn't be that difficult because.
No, there would just be more explaining to have to be done. And that hasn't prevented some council members over time going, I'm going to do this, period. But we've also seen what happens when the citizens say, stop, we're not going to do that. You were inappropriate to be there. We'll move on from there. Again, all I'm looking for, guys, is the checks and balances so that we don't have the one figurehead body, us, being us going runaway, us going rogue without those checks and balances. Somebody go, wait a minute, I do this for a living. That's not a good idea.
That is true.
But finding those people who do do it for a living is going to be tough, too, to write off the beginning. And that's why I feel in the beginning.
I agree with you completely.
It should be us, and then we start looking for those members.
Unless we write the ordinance, year one, only four council, or year two, four council members, year three. Through, I mean, we pare it down by ordinance.
You can do that.
Right.
Again, it's just a question of you don't, I don't think we're limited to five members on the RDC, are we? Carla?
I think you, it calls for a five-member board, as I recall, plus a member of the school corporation.
Right, and we have to ask why we didn't want Billy to vote.
And then they would need an attorney, too, so the town would have to pay that upfront or.
You pay that anyways, whether it's us or them, it's outside the scope of our contract.
It is five members.
Five members and a school board or?
Yes, the school board member.
Non-voting.
Is a non-voting member.
I mean, redevelopment, I think, is a great idea. TIF districts are great. Just, I I cannot, and I'll be the first one to tell you, I'm not no expert by no means on this. And that's why I say, I think maybe just taking baby steps into this, that it would be well-spent money to do it that way than to just say, okay, yeah, let's hire five new members. We'll pick five out of the audience here, come up here. You're the new redevelopment commission, and it fails because of that. So I think whatever we do, we got to give it a lot of thought, for sure.
That's my point.
Yep.
You know, and I'm trying to build in that thought process that we have to slow down, that it can't be one and done or two and done. It's got to be a multiple sequence event. Because again, and not to pick on anybody, but let's just use the state of Indiana. While they have, I don't know if they have an RDC or not, but it makes a difference. They can drop 10 million on a project. If they made a mistake, that's bad. That's more than our entire budget. You don't make those kind of mistakes and survive. You just don't. It seems like a good idea at the time, but it doesn't turn out to be a good idea. And we could still get caught in that. Like I told you, it's a double edged thing. Just here we are playing with the future of the town, that it's awfully difficult to back that up once you go down that road. Because now you've bought property, you can't go sell it necessarily for the same money you got. Now you've encumbered funds, and yes, we do that all the time, but we do that all the time within a scope of a budget dictated by the state of Indiana. Now we're venturing out on a much thinner ice here where there's a lot more room to maneuver. And again, that's the argument for having the council do it. That's my argument for having the council have a say in it and being the cross check against it. Again, it's ultimately whatever the council wants. You know, I'm just putting forward an idea as William put forth, as you put forth. And that's why I'm saying maybe for this evening, we should, you know, provide whatever questions we have to Darla, let her sort it out, and then we can come back and make a decision. If the ultimate decision, the council wants to be the RDC, I'm fine with that. I'm just kind of counseling against it and providing reasons otherwise.
Yeah, and I'll be honest, too, I I think it's a bad idea for the council to be there, too, in the long run. But in the beginning, maybe it's not such a bad idea. So I kind of like that, you know, kind of stepping into it a little bit.
It gives it training wheels.
Right.
I just don't see it necessarily as the council ever backing out of it.
Well, that's why I say we'd have to structure the ordinance that mandates it, but then we'd have to decide who gets off the.
Right.
Yeah.
Where where's the rodeo, where's the merry-go-round when the rodeo stops? And you can engineer it in by district or whatever you want. It still doesn't make it any better.
Right.
You know, whereas the plan commission has two members on it to structure it, move it forward and give it continuity. That's what I was kind of envisioning in a hybrid model of two members, because again, you can't have three because then you have dominance on it. If you had two, you at least had cross checks again on the other side of the fence. And Darla, this is a a non, for want of a better word, non-denominational board. We don't have to have a set political makeup?
No.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Okay. As you do with the plant commission.
What was the answer, yes or no?
No.
No.
The president appoints three, the board appoints two.
If we go down that road, yes. So we can go however. It doesn't make a difference. And, you know, by that means I would, we would have to take applications, see who's even interested to do this. And not saying you have to be involved in real estate or construction or anything like that to be a member because there's a lot of ideas come from people that, you know, teachers or preachers or whatever else that necessarily see a facet to life that the rest of us might not see from the from that perspective that enhances the quality of life here, whereas the rest of us will just go on and not see that portion that we need to address. Further discussion this evening on the RDC.
Do we need to move the table?
I do have one thought, though. You know, you have, Darla said that you don't like it would come to planning and blah, blah, blah. Okay, here's what I'm thinking. Dan and I are on planning, so that, and then we're on the council. So if we were on this board, it would be like three times it passed through us, so that's not really a fresh set of eyes.
No, but you.
So I would be willing, like, if we talked about, like, not beyond it, because I'm going to see it through the planning and then come to council versus every time somebody comes, it's me sitting here with maybe the same thoughts, you know?
And that's a very valid point. Now we have a different sets of council having an eye on it.
Correct, in different stages. I like that idea.
Because like you three aren't on the planning, so I have one more step than you do to see things twice. But then that make a third, but I think maybe we need, maybe not a third, maybe a fresh set of eyes for maybe, say, you three to start out or something.
Yeah, two, at least two of them and having somebody not right there, yeah. Yeah.
On the hybrid model, it'd be two.
It would be two.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you couldn't have three because then you'd have control of a five-member board. Again, I like that idea, guys, for a lot of reasons we put forward. I really like what you just said. That way you have multiple sets of council having eyes on this before it comes to the entire council to yea or nay the whole thing. You know, and again, we could even come back to, not that the, just because I'm sitting here this year, the president has to set out every year and has to be the other four people.
Exactly.
Where the president.
This is what I was thinking, yes.
Yeah, whereas the other four are on RDC, planning.
Right.
And then now the president switches. When it switches, well, somebody's going to come off because you're now the president, so somebody goes on.
Correct.
If that makes sense.
No, I like that.
Because that's your third member that's on the outs that hasn't seen it at all.
Right.
That's your majority that has to go one way or the other. Because say two in the planning want to go one way, two in the RDC want to go one way.
You need a tiebreaker.
You got a tiebreaker who hasn't seen it at all, other than what everybody's brought to them.
I like that. I mean, we're not doing any action tonight on this.
No, no, this is just conversation and an asking. And unless Darla says otherwise, it says discussion. I don't know, we need to table a discussion.
So I have another quick question pointing to me, too.
I read where they could hire their own employees and everything.
Yes.
When it comes to doing up their budget, would we still have oversee of their budget or would they?
That's a great question.
Yes.
Have their own.
Yes, you oversee and approve the budget, just like you approve the budget for the clerk's office.
Okay.
So you can tell them, they may want four employees, and you can say, no, we're going to give you two.
But those, that money comes from the TIF to pay those employees, correct?
Just like your legal money would come out of the TIF or whatever.
I believe so, yes.
Or could, except how we structure it.
Right, and that, you know, that's my question. So if it's TIF money, we still have control over the budget, correct?
Yes, but again, that's a, well, I'm going to take that back because I think Baker Tilly made it clear you really weren't supposed to use it for maintenance.
I guess it doesn't matter where the funds originate, their budget is controlled by us to a certain point.
It kind of would. If they hired four employees, that would fill four employee positions we couldn't fill from the town.
Yeah.
Because they didn't have it in their budget. Just like Jimmy, if he wants to go hire four new officers, he can't. But on the flip side, we tell him, hey, here's $1,500 for tires. We're not going to go tell him, I want you to buy Firestone this month, Goodyear that month. It's the same thing for us.
But I'm saying if they, if we have to pay from from the town point, from the town pool of money, the general fund or whatever, for their employees, then that leaves us less money for the town to do their business.
Right, that's why we would have to approve them hiring anybody's part of their budget.
Right, and I'm, I mean, quite honestly, we're probably five years away from having the money to hire anybody.
And Darla, did you just mention that that TIF money could not be used for employees?
Well, I'm going to have to look at that. The powers of the RDC include hiring and appointing employees, consultants, attorneys, and an executive director. But typically, the TIF money is supposed to be used for capital improvement projects and not for salaries or things of that nature. So I'd have to take another look at that.
Okay, yeah, that's a biggie with me. I mean, we're stretched to the limit now.
And again, that's why the council has control of their budget. I mean, there are only two people in the, well, only one person in this town that we do not have control of the hiring of, and that is her deputy. Everybody else serves at the pleasure of this council and has to come to council for approval. So it's the same with, I assume, Darla, unless I'm wrong, it's the same with the redevelopment commission or if plan commission want to have employees or plan commission want to do this, or it still has to come to the the board for approval of a budget item.
Yes, because you're going to have control over the budget.
Yeah, no matter where the funds originate.
Yes, that's my understanding.
But if this is another budget item we would have to pay for, for an employee servant, not just take employees out of it, consulting, attorney and everything, that's money taken from the town right here and now.
I think she just said that can be taken out of the TIF, legal funds, maintenance.
No, she said it couldn't be.
I I want to look at that again.
Okay.
You have control over the budget and the RDC can hire those people. But I need to take another look at the statute and the Baker Tilly presentation to see what you can't use TIF funds for.
Because I understand it, that's no different than Jimmy hiring people. We have to give him the authority to do it.
Right, I understand, but for example, for Jimmy hiring more people, that's coming from funds that all the people in the town are contributing to. That's coming from funds that will apply to the whole fund. But we're talking staff for a TIF district or an RDC as separate entity. That's like if we decided to hire people for us, staff for us, it would pull away from what we could do for Jimmy or what we could do for Kevin and.
A better analogy is utilities. They are separate from the general fund of the town. They are a wholly, and I'm going to get this wrong, so to Jeff, who's not here, I apologize upfront. They are a wholly owned corporation of the town of Ellisville, subject to the whims of the board. There's there's not a sewer board or a water board over top of them before it gets to us. So they, he can't go out and hire four more people unless we say, yeah, you're right, go. So they, he can't go out and hire four more people unless we say, "Yeah, you're right, go ahead," even though he has the funds in reserve, because they took in more than they thought they would. How that would happen, I'm not sure. But to me, it's the same premise. We still have to say, "Yeah, you can do this," or "No, you can't."
Kevin, you had a point to make.
I just was saying, the way I understood the meaning of Baker Tilly, that those costs that you were talking about are part of the project plan. They're figured into the project.
I would hope so. Yeah, I would hope so, because I understand about, you know, priming the pump, so to speak, to get it going. But long-term, being on the hook, I mean, eventually, the growth should be paying for itself. And this is really a TIF district, and doing this is really the only way to make sure that our taxpayers are not paying for the new growth, the current taxpayers.
You're right on accounts. So that's why we have to be very careful how we structure this, because there are a lot of pitfalls, and you know, I'm glad everybody has said, "Hey, what about this? What about that?" Because those are whatabouts, like you just pointed out, they're five to 10 years in the future. We're not voting on next Tuesday, folks. We're voting on five years from next Tuesday, when none of us may be on this council.
You said that to me 20 years ago, Scott.
And yet, we both still keep coming back.
I know.
So any further discussion, because we could keep this up all night.
My notes from the Baker Tilly presentation show that the impact fees cannot be used for operation or maintenance expenses, but I have a note here that I'll have to confirm with Baker Tilly, some soft costs might be included in the fees. But those are impact fees, so I will take a look at this and get back to you.
Okay. So with the board's acquiescence, my big word for the day, are you ready to move on? So now, we'll move to privilege of the floor. Does someone, anyone having...
We have a board award.
Award bid for construction.
Supervisor comments, but if you're okay with that, let me do the privilege of the floor, then we'll come back.
Okay.
So privilege of the floor, anyone having business for the council not part of the normal agenda. Seeing none, now we'll move back to old business under supervisor comments. So Mr. Town Manager, the floor is yours.
I'm gonna let Darla take this one.
The winning bid for the Department of Public Works building was Fox Construction Company, or is Fox Construction Company, Inc., with the bid of $4,448,700. So they will be the ones to build your new Department of Public Works building.
So do you need us to approve that?
Yes, please. Accept the bid tendered by Fox Construction Company Incorporated.
Okay, is there a motion from council?
I will move to accept the bid from Fox, what's the name of the company?
Fox Construction Company Incorporated.
Fox Construction Company Incorporated for the amount of $4 million? What Darla said.
Please, there's a second.
Second.
Motion's second. Noel, please.
Dan Swaffer?
Yes.
Trevor Zager?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Pamela Sample?
Yes.
I'd like to add to that, before we complete construction and move into a new building, I'd really appreciate it if townspeople, taxpayers, board members, anybody that's interested in why we would be doing this, please come visit us in our buildings we're working out of now, and bring a ham sandwich and try to eat it there, and then we'll talk.
Well, while I'll let that pleasant little thought dwell for a moment, how long do you think before this is built and running?
Well, we joked about, we'd like to have a Christmas party in it this year, but it might be cold in there. But we think that the majority of the work will be done this year. If we have good weather up into Christmas, like we did the last few years, we think we'll be close. Probably move-in date will be in spring, when they do things like fencing and paving. There'll be things that are weather-related that'll be last, and so it'll probably really be spring.
And just because we voted on this absent the discussion before it, that's still planning on going out back here beside the cabin, or where are you gonna put this?
Well, it'll be just, I guess, west of the cabin. There's a clearing back there. Anybody that's interested in what we're doing for a new building, I'd be glad to bring them up and show them around. There's a plan for that whole 50 acres. It includes a park, a trail, the log cabin, flutter garden, and Department of Public Works building. And there might be one more surprise that I'd have before I leave your services.
And we just wanna caution folks, don't wander back there on your own. There's some hazards back there, including a pretty deep sinkhole, so...
Yes.
Wait for Mike to take you back.
Don't be going into spring when mushrooms are growing, too.
Anything else?
That's all.
Chief?
Oh, well, are you doing supervisor's comments now?
Yep.
Oh, wait a minute, I got one more. So, as you know, about three weeks ago, we had a series of main breaks, starting with a 12-inch main, transmission main breaking, causing havoc throughout the town, boil orders, this, that, and the other. And then we had four days of main breaks that finally ended on Friday about 6:30, 7 o'clock at night. So we thought we was over that. Everything seems to be back to normal, and then we had a storm move in, probably last, a week ago, Tuesday. And I didn't know it, but there was quite the lightning storm. And so we have had lightning hit our water mains before, isolated incidents. It's only happened a couple times in my 28 years of being here, or however long I've been here. And so that last Tuesday night, we had six strikes, resulting in about 10, 12 breaks, just destroyed our water mains. One was a large eight-inch water main, so we lost about a million gallons in about six hours. And so our guys, our crews worked all that night, all the next day, and into the night of the next night. So very unprecedented event, and once again, the crews, the Department of Public Works, everybody worked, and it pretty wore, pretty much wore them out. It was just, I mean, it was, it was, I've been here a long time. I've been doing this job for 55 years. I got some pretty good City of Bloomington stories, but this one kinda takes the cake. I understand that Eastern Heights had the same thing happen to them, too, and they had multiple lightning strikes, that run down their water mains and exploded them. They literally bring the water main up out of the ground, so... But kudos to the crews for taking care of business, and we jumped on it pretty quick, isolated the situation, and worked on it for a couple of days. So it was, so anybody that knew something was going on and say, "Oh, no, here we go again," this was just totally different. It's just, like I said, lightning strikes, who'd have thought? So, anyway, wanted to mention it.
Was it Sean that was responding on social media to people, I believe?
Yeah, we use social media, and we are, and I will say one more thing, we are about to enter a relationship with Everbridge, is that correct? Everbridge that uses, that is the dispatch for emergencies for the county now. And in fact, we're gonna enter into professional services and get about 10 hours of training so we can be up and running quickly. And so I just got that contract today, and I'm gonna get it back to them, and you'll be hearing about when we'll break out and have that available to all the townspeople. It'll be on their town bills. We'll put it on the internet. We'll put it on our Facebook and our website. But we are going to have a means to reach out directly to our customers in the near future.
I just wanted to thank for getting the word out, Sean, the job that was done.
Yeah, everybody did a good job. When I say the crews, I'm talking about the office crews, too.
No, I understand, good.
Thank you.
But there's one thing we have thankfully always been blessed with. All the employees are just phenomenal, and work well above what they're paid to do. Chief?
Thank you. This one thing, the council approved an extra officer for the police department and one for the fire department last year. Chief Deputy Robinson is the chair of the committee. We've interviewed candidates, and we should have a candidate for you on the June 10th meeting. We hope to have that done for you, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Chief?
This year's fireworks, if you haven't seen on social media, will be July the 6th. And this will be the 29th year that the Ellisville Fire Department has sponsored that, along with all of the donors. That's the way the fireworks are, there's no tax money in that. That's all from business donations, people giving at the gate and so on, so it's very much appreciated. And that's all I have tonight.
I got a question, because we're debating it up here. Did we not set aside some money last year for, to help with fireworks?
Not that I'm aware of.
Can you check, Noel? Because I seem to remember that discussion, whether it got in the budget or not, but I know we had a discussion on it.
If I look at the minutes, I can tell you that it's not in the budget anywhere.
Okay.
Might be able to do sparklers.
Well, it may have been in, it in your budget under promotion of town business is where we put it, so you might look there.
Oh, we can always get into that.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have anything.
Noel?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, and I know it's not on the agenda, but since he's here, we'll ask, Dan, did you have anything from Envision Ellisville? Okay. Council comments?
I do. I have a press release I want to read. I thought the whole council got this. This is from Julie Thomas on behalf of the commissioners. I'll just read what it is. Monroe County Commissioners seek feedback from local residents, general public, on potential jail location at North Park. Listening sessions to be held June 2nd and June 5th. Members of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners will host two listening sessions in the next few weeks in order to gather public feedback about the potential jail site at North Park, located to the northwest of the intersection of State Road 46 West and I-69. Residents living nearby and other members of the general public are invited to attend on Sunday, June 2nd at 3:00 p.m., or Wednesday, June 5th at 6:00 p.m. The meeting will take place at the Ellisville Fire Station, 5080 West State Road 46. I do hope you knew about that, Kevin. Okay. Both listening sessions will feature a brief presentation on the North Park site. Afterward, neighbors will have the opportunity to share their ideas, questions, and any concerns they may have. To us on the Board of Commissioners, getting input from the neighbors is very, every bit important and relevant, as performing an engineering study when you're sitting on a project like this, as Julie Thomas, President of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. As we await the results of the engineering study and geotechnical survey of the property, we continue to examine other important factors before selecting a jail site, explains Penny Giffens, Vice President of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. Feedback from area residents is an important part of the site selection. The commissioners have also invited the sheriff and other area leaders, so that they, too, will be able to hear from residents firsthand. Members of the public who aren't able to attend either June 2nd or June 5th meetings are encouraged to email their feedback to the Monroe County Board of Commissioners at commissionersoffice@co-monroe.in.is. They're also welcome to attend the Monroe County Commissioners' virtual office hour sessions. Check the online event calendar at the county website for dates, times, and team links. Since the council didn't get all this, Noel, I forwarded this to you, so you could get it out to the relevant departments. A little bit of feedback on this. I, was it Friday I texted you, Mike, asking about this?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, Marty Hawk, I want to give her credit. We probably would not have known about this unless she would have let me know, because I don't think they, they hadn't sent it out to anybody in Ellisville.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I got it.
Huh?
I got it.
Oh, today?
That from Julie.
Right, okay, you got it today. Dan said he hadn't gotten it.
I just looked. I got it at 3:30.
Okay, so we all did get it, but that's good. I couldn't see the CC list. So I encourage the public, if this is something that you're concerned about, I really would love to see our law enforcement and fire weigh in on their thoughts. Not necessarily here, but, I mean, because it's gonna impact all of us if it goes there, one way or the other. It could be positive, maybe not. I don't know. But that's what those are for, and I do thank Marty for letting us know so we could get the word out today.
Okay, anything else? Anyone? Okay, nothing else? All right. Seeing no further business, the council is adjourned.